Good evening. I'd like to call this budget meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge led by Mayor Protimber Gonsalas.
We'll open up with the large prayer. Dear Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Page the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ruko.
Mayor Protimber Ricky Gonsalas?
President.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot?
Here.
Councilmember Warren White?
Here.
Councilmember Troy Como?
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill?
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Dan.
Here. Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on and we'll start. I don't have a list, so blame me, I'm making it up. Uh, let's go city court first. We're gonna do a big one and a small one, a big one and a small one. City Court, you're up. Might as well make it fun.
My bet, give us the page to reference, please.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I'm gonna be skipping around.
That's what I, that's what I told her, said, page five.
Okay. Evening, guys. How y'all doing? Good to see all of you. Um, thank you for having us. It's not much of a change. If you look on the second page, you'll see it's about a 2.2% um increase. I'm here for any questions from the administration or council, if y'all have anything. We appreciate everything the city does, and we work hard to, to stay within the means of not just the court, but the city as well, to be a good, and I view it as a partnership between the court and the city, I really do, so.
2% increase, that's less than cost of living at two and a half.
Yes. We try to, like I said, we try to be good partners. Okay, let me make a little announcement. Okay. This budget has a 4% increase. Okay. We did the 2%, and we, we trying, if this council approves it, I want you to look at the bottom line, everything else, but we added an extra 2%. Now, that is not for police and fire, they are a whole nother system. That's for municipal. Uh, police and fire have had some raises and had some opportunities, municipal hasn't. So it did tighten the budget up some, but I'm giving it a shot. So just to tell you, it's, it's 4%. Okay, alright, well, thank you, I appreciate that. Cool, cool.
Judge.
Yes, sir. Yes.
How many um employees you have in this budget right now?
We have five.
In this budget right here?
I have five clerks. Well, including myself would be six, but five clerks. I have two um that work on civil. I have Ms. Freeman, who's here, who's a judicial administrator, and I have two that work primarily criminal and/or traffic um on that side of the window that everybody's familiar with, on the traffic citation and whatnot.
Thank you.
I have a question too.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, increasing your health insurance, huh?
Uh, let's see, where is that?
We have, of course, the, that's uh.
First page, looking for it.
Group health insurance.
Negative five.
It's going down.
It went down.
It looks like it's going down by five and a half percent.
Yeah, it went down.
Yeah.
And it's been kind of the trend, so let's hope it continues.
Yeah, we like the negative. We like the downslope, it's the, it's the upslope that gets problematic, so. Any other questions or comment? My bet, do you have anything?
No, the only thing is, there's just a couple of little tweaks. Um, I realized after I presented the budget books to y'all, there are some longevity increases.
Yes.
Um, you may see between now and the final budget, city court is one department that had a couple of employees with longevity increases.
Now, you remember, you make five years, you get extra 2%.
The numbers are, oh, increased a little bit, not by much.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, guys. Good seeing y'all. Thank y'all for being partners with us, we appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Alright, now I do a big one. Fire department. Sorry, sorry, chief. I got two chiefs, man. It can't, it can't always be all about you. Woodpage. Oh, there you go.
He ain't wrong.
Woodpage, my bet.
Woodpage.
What changes do you have, chief? Besides the raise?
Um, that, that was probably the biggest effect was the increase, the quarter cent sales tax that we added to the revenue side of the budget.
A half million dollars for a fire truck.
Yeah, you did, you did add.
We do have a half million in. The chief has a suggestion, and it's probably a darn good one. We were gonna buy one new truck, now we're gonna at least research what we could do to rehear- rehab two trucks. You can send two existing trucks for about quarter of a million dollars each, they go through the whole truck, they do everything, and you basically get a new truck back. So whatever we need to do, you know, we've bought two brand-new fire trucks since I've been here, we bought that million-dollar, lord knows what it would cost now, ladder truck, and if we can do this, that would, you know, help. We're doing everything we can to protect that level-two rating, and to keep the fire department, you know, healthy, so I did put that in. I mean, it's uh.
Yeah, I mean, that's all, a lot of municipalities are having to go to it because the price of that truck, when we bought them, was about $430,000, today they're about 800.
Right.
Just that fast. So, you know, you're having to get creative. So you're gonna take some older trucks, I mean, we don't run parish-wide, we don't put a lot of miles on them, they're big Cummins diesels, so why not see about refurbishing them, clean them up, you know, redo the pumps, and, I mean, they're 25 years old, so gotta get some more years out of them.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that new fire tax that we implemented, that people voted for, when did, did that take effect in your budget?
It, it, it took effect, we do it July 1st?
This fiscal year.
This will be the.
The um, the um businesses started collecting the taxes July 1st. We received our first payment on those um into August 1st to September.
So we're just starting that now?
Yes, and now we're starting to utilize it.
Yeah, we're starting to collect the revenue, but we went ahead because we had a fund balance.
Uh-huh.
We went ahead and, and started the raises on July 1st, so that's why you'll see a big change, I think you had asked for 250 something. That's why it looks like a huge increase when you go to the, the full year of, what, 700%? That's why.
788.
Yeah, that, that's why the revenue looks like it grew so much, because you started off with that
Right.
initial money that we put in.
What, um, can you tell me what the state supplement pay per employee?
State supplemental pay, so after the first year of employment, they, the state gives them $600 a month, as long as they have their firefighter one certificate, and that, like I said, that kicks in after the first year. So what we've been doing for the last, I don't know, year, year and a half, to, to make up that gap, we cover the first year, we pay the $600 a month, and then we take it back. When the state, when the state kicks theirs in, we go ahead and cut that off.
So how long they have to be there before they start collecting?
One year.
One year?
They have to have one year. If they come from another department with a year of service already.
Already there.
Yeah, it's already there, it just, it just kicks in.
And what about the um city supplement pay?
That's what, the money that, yeah, the money that we pay in the first year of employment
Right.
to, to keep that salary up, that's what you see right there. And that's probably a new line from years ago.
That was my question too.
Yeah. Anybody else? I bet you have anything?
Other than, other than the two trucks, refer to any potential major expenses you anticipating moving forward?
The only thing we, we, we talked about and we, we looking at is to do something with that station on Admiral Dahl, just because of the age. It, it, it needs to be painted, we need to do something to the brick, just cuz it's, it's one of the biggest exposed properties that we have on that street, and it uh, it's, it's starting to really look its age. What that's gonna cost, you know, depends on, I mean, whether it's just paint, whether it's a new facade on the outside, to, you know, to kind of update that building, uh, but money's gonna, money's gonna tell. That's why we left. So I think we, we projected, uh, the only other difference that I'm gonna tell you about, uh, that doesn't show up right now because we anticipate using the CARES Act money if we have to before the end of the year is.
And the chief is the only department left. CARES Act money was before ARPA, that was a long time ago. He's the only one that still has CARES Act money.
Only like 14 grand or something.
He's been, he's got a hundred and something. He's been very frugal with that money, so.
So, yeah, the, so the state of Louisiana passed what they call Act 554, which requires fi- all fire departments in the state to uh provide an initial cancer screening for, I don't remember, did you have it, 10 or 11 different cancers?
Yep.
So we're in the midst of setting that up and, and getting the cost, uh, we're trying to work with it through Iber Medical and one of their physicians to do it, to make it easier, cuz you start sending people out to
Right.
10 different doctors, it can be a, a big issue. So because that cost is unknown, we reduced the carryover to $50,000 in the CARES Act. If we don't use it prior to the uh November 1st, I think you're gonna come back in January and do an amendment.
Right, we'll, we'll do a rollover.
Yeah, it'll roll over.
The carryforward budget adjustment.
As you know me, I'm hoping I don't spend it.
Yes, sir, but that, but we all know that's something we have to do, I mean.
No, 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 you have.
There's no timeline on it, right?
It's important.
It, it's required, I mean, the, the legislation passed this year.
We need to do it.
So you, you, you need to try and do, we trying to implement it.
Yes.
There's a couple of hurdles. Uh, we actually, uh, we met with Iber Medical, uh, they contacted hospitals around the state, no one else really even knows about it. So we, we in the front of it, uh, and there's some requirements to re-screen, you know, depending on age, your age group.
Right.
So we trying to just get a grasp on, on what that ongoing cost is gonna be.
And, and whatever we have to do.
The initial one, the initial one's the big one because you gotta catch everybody.
Yeah, it's a requirement, and it's something that we wanna do, the cancer rate in fire, you know.
It's a benefit, too.
It's a benefit.
Oh, it is, so it's, it's gonna come out, I mean, we have the money to do it.
Right.
It's just nailing down all the logistics of, I mean, we have people that have been retired, but 30.
30 years.
Yeah, 30, 40 years, it's still alive, and, and you know, we gotta track those people down, or at least.
At least make an attempt.
At least make an attempt to notify them.
But the cancer in firefighters is, you know, uh, the percentage is much higher, so it's something we wanna do, whatever it takes from our budget, when, you know, what you're using now, appreciate it, but whatever we have to do.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one more question I forgot. Uh, on a workers' comp, I see that um the projection is pretty high. Is that because you think we have more employees, or we had some stuff that happened?
I think what happened in the past, that the, the, the way the count, uh, workman's comp, my bet, I'll hit her a little button, workman's comp was, was split in a, in a different way. I don't think it was done, go ahead.
The reason it's so much higher, we do get um, uh, workers' comp will send like a rebate. We don't account for that in the budget, but we, you know, when it does come in, it will reduce the actual workers' comp expense for the fire department.
Because normally, every year, I didn't, I don't think they came this past year, they come with a rebate check?
They come with a rebate check. Some years, they budgeted the rebate check. We're not doing that. If we get a rebate check, it's separate. If you remember one time, a check was so large, which I love to do again, I got to divide money up and give it to each district.
Exactly.
I know our budget's tight, maybe that can't happen, but if it can, so I like the way we do it now, that we're not budgeting, cuz you know what the rebate's gonna be.
We have no idea.
So we have no idea, but if it comes in strong, then I know the budget's tight, but I will not give off, get off of my philosophy, that new money does new things. So when and if it comes, I can't do anything without you, but I'll bring it. If I think we needed to shore up something in the existing budget, that's what I'll propose. If our budget is healthy at the time, and we can do something new, what I've done twice before is divide the money up per district. So, and then we have to pick from the master study, you can't just go, you know, ho, wow, we gotta pick from something that we need.
Correct.
Uh, but let's just wait and see how that goes, I don't.
So this past year, did we put it back into the department? No?
No, that, um, we, that's what we did, we did some, some projects, uh, our WCC refund check.
Yep.
At 313,000.
Yeah, that got, that got divided up. Now, I have new council members here, so hopefully you get that opportunity.
And, and now, the way that I'm budgeting workers' comp is based on actual true costs to each department. Um, each department, yeah, every employee falls under a certain risk code um through the, the workers' comp certain, and um I'm allocating workers' comp based on the employ, the, the wages.
So in fire department, every, every employee of the fire department is in the same classification?
10.5% of what we pay.
Okay.
Basically across the board.
Of course, that's always the one, yeah.
Yeah, it's the high, I think it's the highest.
That fire, fires, one of the highest.
Well, y'all the only ones who run and burn in buildings, it should be the highest ones.
Yeah, it's pretty high.
Okay, thank you. Y'all good? Anybody else? The chief's giving me the ah, the other chief. Thank you, thank you, chief. Uh, Bonnie. Like I said, a big one or a little one? Come on up, Bonnie. She's having fun. Woodpage.
Can't get much smaller than this.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's one employee.
Fifty-six.
Two. Alright, Bonnie, what's changing in your budget?
I only have one tiny, small change, and that's with a clerk under the line item of a clerk of court expense, and we just uh projecting that we're gonna need to have two filings next year versus one that we usually have.
Okay.
And that's it.
That's your only change?
Nope.
Good. Any questions or comments?
Your group health insurance went down too, then?
I think that's citywide.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's gonna be citywide.
So every, you can see that.
Yeah, no one department can do anything to affect, I mean, you know, it's a, it's a group policy, so.
Glad to know that.
Pretty much, anyway. Everybody good? Okay, thank y'all, I appreciate it. Okay, let's do a big one. Uh, look, now they all wanna go. Uh, chief, let's do that, let's do the police department. Yeah, he's like, please, please. He had the look on his face, I said, okay, I'm gonna give it to him. He looked the most miserable. Yeah.
This is page 19.
Chief, what's changing in your budget?
Well, we're not buying a half-million-dollar fire truck, so that's not in the budget. I mean, pretty much with us, the status quo. I mean, uh, what we've been buying in the past is still the same. Uh, salaries, obviously, are, uh, the 2% increases, normally what's happened, happens every year. Um, other than that, I'm open for questions. Simple enough?
Who's the question, the chief?
Nothing yelling on the chief's, but they.
Anybody got anything?
State grant 776, the state grant 776, so you gotta, uh, is it minus 100, you spent it all, it's just, it's, it's.
Yeah, the, the, the grants are just, Jane will tell you.
In and out, right?
Or the crime cameras, yeah, that's, that's the Jeff Landry money.
That's Jeff Landry money, yeah. Thank you, Jeff Landry. That bought us, that gave us $250,000, and we added that to our crime camera system, and it bought more cameras.
Yeah, yeah. No, I thought it was my grants in general, the grants overall are just not available, like they used to be years past. So uh, it was costing us more to, to go out and try to get uh locals to, to get it, and it just wasn't cost efficient.
Yes, sir.
On the revenue side, the sales tax fund, um revised budget was 3 million, and right under that, the public safety tax fund is 4.3. And then the actual, 2025 is zero.
Those, those are operating transfers. Um, I make those transfers at the end of the year based on actual costs. These are just the projection that we need to balance the um department out.
Gotcha.
And then at the end of the year, I make the, the true transfers, it's just a paper transfer.
Gotcha.
To make sure we balance out.
That's Mr. Mybet keeping me in line.
Thing, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I could, I could use that help myself.
Yeah. Anybody else? Mybet, do you have anything?
Okay. Any major expenditures you anticipating, or you feel comfortable?
No, I feel comfortable. I mean, it, it's, we've been able to.
I like to see what's on the horizon. If you see something, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, obviously, the, the biggest, the biggest thing we have was a crime camera project, uh, which we feel is making a difference. Um, I feel it's gonna steady as this year goes on, you'll start seeing some things being there, cuz we're, we're at a higher rate. We're already at a high rate of, of crime solves, but District Attorney's Office and, and our office have come together, and it, it's been smooth. So I don't anticipate anything that, that's, I mean, we always anticipate, like hurricanes and those type, you know, natural disaster stuff, but when it comes to policing, I mean, it, it's, it's what we do, so we've kind of got that down. That, that part's the easy part, you know. The equipment-wise, I mean, we, we've, we know now, over the last seven years, what we've needed. We've gotten all the startup stuff, and now it's, it's manag- managing the maintenance and, and keeping all the equipment running and everything going, so. It was nice as that when we started, bought everything new. And now it's just a matter of just maintenance.
I remember you said that the mobile cameras were on back, the trailers were backed up, do we ever get those?
Bills will be in probably by tomorrow.
We couldn't get close, cuz we wondered if the hurricane.
No, you had said that, no.
No, I, I talked to the vendor uh last week, he said they will be there, here this week, done.
Good, good.
The trailer's in, I saw the trailers, they're local, uh, he was putting the rest of the equipment on. Cuz we added some additional, uh, some additional cameras uh to the trailers for the festivals, especially for Hurricane Festival. Uh, we wanna assure everybody that attends our festivals that they will be safe. Uh, we're gonna have those cameras strategically placed, both cameras strategically placed in the festival grounds.
And that'll go for Hurricane, Gumbo Cook-Off, Spanish Festival, you know, all of our, our parades, I mean, everything that we do. I don't want people to think it's just, you know, for once.
No, no.
We just, we just really wanted to get it in, cuz the hurricane festival is our first, kind of kicks the year off of festivals, a big festival, so, you know, we're gonna make it.
But these cameras are equipped with, uh, there's six cameras on each trailer. There's a quad on top, and there's two specifically lined-out cameras to, if we're looking at entrance-exit points of where people go in and out from the festival grounds, and then, of course, a secondary one, whether we need to place that, uh, where the vendors are. Uh, we'll place it in places where we think that our, where our crowds will be, and it's all, like I said, it becomes mobile. If we feel that it needs to be moved, we'll get to the truck and move it over. But everybody will be see it, cuz it'll have the blue lights on them, and people will be very clear that they're there. So that, that along with the cameras we already have existing on poles.
Yeah.
You got a lot more cameras still got to go out that you have left?
Um, we have another eight sites left to do.
Okay.
Um, they're up, but there was some issues, some Cox issues and some power stuff, that, uh, you know, when the first vendor came out, kind of the same situation where, put a whole batch of them out, you deal with some of the bugs that happen as you put them up, whether Cox service, whether it's, whether it's the camera themselves, whether it's power, you, we go through all the, working out the kinks.
Right, right.
Uh, we've got that down to science now, the second vendor that came in, we're now working with him to make sure that we adjust those problems as they show up, so. Uh, but we had some sites, cuz we, we had three designated for the Pepplerx that we're not quite ready to put in yet, just because of, uh, there's still work to be done at the, at the Pepplerx.
Good, cuz they had a few people called about different mode that they heard that we was gonna be putting out, and they wanted to kind of get some idea on that.
Yeah, no, they, they, they'll be, they're, they're, I mean, the vendor's working with us right now, it's the same vendor that's dealing with the mobile trailers, that's putting out the cameras in town now.
Okay.
So, uh, so, but I put a, I put a priority on the mobile cameras to get ready for festival time.
Right, right.
So I, I kind of adjusted him and slowed down the, that part, and put the trailers to be a priority.
Boom. Yes, sir.
Uh, revenues, again, the traffic fines, you have two lines, the same code number, with one of them is ta- tagged blue. What's the difference?
That's, that's the blue line, traffic fines.
Blue, uh.
The school zone.
The, the school zones.
Okay.
That's working out, matter of fact, that's working out good?
No, the, the, it, we've, uh, the state law requires a, the painting of the roads, and how they did it is not, uh, we don't, we don't deem it as compliant with state law, so we've told them we need to redo it.
Okay, cool.
We won't collect until that happens.
Alright, glad to hear that.
Yep.
We're not gonna violate state law.
Alright.
Yep. Anybody else?
Didn't want to announce it, but don't want people to slow down.
Yeah.
I would say I'd be happy to see an increase on the fines between with all the litter we, littering we having and the people driving crazy. It seemed like I'd nearly get run off the road on a daily basis.
We, we do have a traffic unit out there, and, and we plan on adding to that unit, so, uh, we do have a one that, one of our guys that rides a motorcycle when the weather's good, uh, so he has been issuing a ton of citations. He pays attention to the illustrious Facebook court, and hits those areas that, of concerns.
Alright, anybody else? Thank you, chief. Uh, Haley. What, what? Hey, Woodpage. Any changes in your budget?
Yeah, well, I have projections from HUD for our HAP revenue and expenses, so again, it's just projections. Um, I didn't get my 2025 budget until May of this year, so it shows, you know, 1,650,000 for 2025, but really it's 75,000 more, so, um, you know, we're projecting with a 1,793, just in HAP expense. And I don't really have that much, anything else different, really.
Okay, it looked pretty much the same. Any questions or comments?
I'm just two employees, you and a part-timer?
Uh, I have a full-time housing coordinator and a part-time inspector.
Okay.
Everybody good? Okay, Mybet, you have anything? No? Okay.
That was easy.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, okay, now I need a big one. Sewer.
Oh, Lord.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, that's the animal of the night. It's, uh, sewer, y'all know, is our most challenging. We are spending millions in sewer. Much of it, much of it, we had to fund ourselves. Um, so sewer's, uh.
Good evening, council.
Is the animal. Woodpage. And it's not going away. Yeah, page 65. Craig, what's different in your budget for this year?
Um.
Don't add anything.
You tell me, friend.
If you ask Craig to ask for something, let me tell you, he's not bashful. He asks for the best. He don't get it, but he asks for the best.
Craig, how you say that? You, you tell him, huh? Tell him, tell him. Yeah, he tell me. Um, so, let's see. Um, I mean, everything in expenditures, for the most part, stayed the same, with the exception of, like, plant repairs, um, equipment repairs and maintenance. Um, we foresee some extra, you know, charges and, and equipment repairs with all these drum screens situation. Um, but yeah, so capital outlet, we have quite a few more projects.
Brian McClain subdivision.
Brian McClain subdivision, we have BNSF raising their, uh, tracks, Flow 25, I'm guessing that's the flow route.
Yep.
Gene Street.
And those are big numbers, you know, the flow routes, $4 million, the drum screens that we're finishing was for, $4 million. Uh, you know, Pollard Street that's ongoing, that they told us was gonna be 300,000 is, how much is Pollard Street, Craig?
Million and a half.
A million and a half?
Yeah.
Is a million and a half. Uh, Gene Street Pump Station, uh.
Around three.
Around three. It was supposed to be 80-something when we started. I mean, we have an old system, our system has issues, and I can tell you, you know, it's not a secret, there's not a lot of people that do municipal sewer, so our bids are coming in high. So we, uh, have a lot of challenges in sewer, but I mean, we, we meet in them, but it's, uh, it hadn't been easy.
Hey, what line item is sewer user fees? For some reason, I couldn't find it.
I don't have the same numbering as y'all.
Page 72?
72.
We have 4.2 million budgeted for sewer user fees.
It, um, it looks like that, that fee, I mean, um, like the lows in that, that, I saw it as a different line item. Lows, uh, loves, I'm sorry, loves. Um, cuz they pay a sewer user fee to us?
No, um, it's included in the bill.
Here's an answer from Amplex.
Now we know where he's getting his questions from.
Chat, chat GPT.
GPT, baby.
My doctor called it, honestly. Cuz we implemented sewer user fee, I don't know if the mayor was here, and we never went up on our sewer user fee.
Yeah.
People, you know, that's accurate.
Other than the, the 2%, uh, the CPI increase every year.
That's right, the only thing that went up is CPI, never went up, other than that.
Well, that's why we gave the 5 million back.
That's right.
One of the reasons we have so many challenges in sewer is because we got 5 million through water sector. They required us to do a stabilization rate study. When we did that, it showed that we weren't connect, collecting enough. Every other mayor and other municipalities just started spending the money right away. Man, we got money from the state. So I waited, and then they started calling me. So I waited and then they started calling me, well, you know, now we're forced to go up on sewer user fee because we started spending the money. So we're the only one who gave the money back because we did not want to raise sewer user fee. Has it been a challenge to do that? A huge challenge.
Tried like hell.
And we tried to get another rate study. We tried to, as other companies have come online, I bet has the formula, she's sitting there working it. I mean, we've tried everything we can to try to justify that what we're bringing in is enough so that we could apply for water sector money. We can't get any grants. It's why we borrowed that, that point nine percent interest, which is a good interest rate. Why we just borrowed four, four million, four and a half million, so we can do the flow reroute. I mean, we're gonna find a way to make our system work, but we have not, uh, you know, gone up on our fee.
It just seemed like all was happening in town, I know the projection for twenty-four was a lot more for the sewer user fee. It shows like five million and we end up collecting, I think, four point something million.
Yeah.
But, um, it just seemed like our projection with the new things that's happening and all the businesses, we would be getting a sewer user fee total would be higher.
Well, we're.
Not that the cost would be the total.
Right, we're hopeful of that, but, you know.
The rate study actually showed, uh, that it was declining.
Yeah, yeah. We, we had some challenges with the rate study that we didn't quite agree with, number one. Number two, you're not wrong, but I don't want to fool myself. When I got a, a, a department that is so challenged financially, I don't want to make these big projections and then find myself that I didn't live up to that and now I'm in even worse shape. I'd rather have a conservative approach of this is what I think we're bringing in and, you know, if, if we get more from different businesses that are piped in, if new businesses come, if the subdivisions take off, you know, if those things happen, yes, it, we, we should get more than this. But man, I don't want to fool myself when, when I'm already running a tight budget, I'd rather just leave my projection of, of revenue.
I agree with that.
A little lower.
But on a business, um, everybody pays a sewer user fee. I, I had a discussion with somebody about it. Business or?
Yeah, everybody pays.
But the ones like loves and that, y'all have a set fee in there that we charge them?
We have flow meters and so.
It's included in that?
Everything with the parish has a flow meter, uh, but loves doesn't, loves is a percentage. It's in the city already.
In the city.
So it doesn't have. It's a percentage too. So it's, it's, yeah, it's not a flow meter. But everything that's outside the city limits that we service through a parish contract that comes up September one of next year, in that contract, everything is flow metered.
Daily, it's recorded.
Yeah, and we check it and track it and Craig was showing he has some ways to backtrack it and make sure it's working and that is right, you know.
And so in the future, if we have some more business, say maybe like solar panel, whatever, uh, place, I, I see a user fee, not fee go up, but our amount of collection might go up.
Well, it depends on where it is. The new contract that we will do in September, uh, that contract's really old and it has a very low rate, that, that number will go up. As far as for inside the city.
No.
That's where we were trying to say, you know, we're not increasing it. Um, and the process is a long process, I got time, but I'm in the process of doing comparisons of all of that now, so that when we come for that, when the time comes, we'll have a good chart and graph that shows everything, so we can make some intelligent decisions.
But yeah, we should see more volume of flow coming from.
And we should.
The airport.
We should.
And we did increase, if you see the line above it, IPG sewer fees. That has been increased with the anticipation of what, um, additional billing to the parish for the first solar.
Right, but we didn't go to the max with it.
Right.
We, we came with a conservative number and, and didn't say, okay, they're gonna send us a million gallons more a day, go. I mean, we're not, we're not doing that.
Yeah, and that's good.
Yeah.
You don't want to go over them.
I appreciate that, because it's always an issue.
Under promise, over delivered.
And where something come in, we got to make some money for it. We ain't gotta go over.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
I mean, you always seeing challenging projects, you know, on the horizon. Obviously, there's no particular one, correct?
No, there's five particular ones.
They were equally challenging. If you look at the sewer line we're on on Pollard Street, you think that would be easy. John came, last meeting, the engineer told us about it, then he left here and sent us another note. Well, I talked to him today. You know, the hole that we used seventy ton, seventy yards of limestone to fill? You know, they hit one today and we used a hundred and fifty. He's got another one coming of, uh, yeah, he calculated the void at a hundred and fifty instead of, the other one was seventy something of quickcrete. So now we got one that's gonna be a hundred and something and he thinks the next one of Phil Crete will probably be, you know, even bigger. So all that is, you know, the clock's running. I mean, when you dig in the ground, you don't know what you're gonna find and that sewer line, we knew we needed to change it because it was leaking, which affected our road bed, which affected our road, but you don't know how much, but you know, that's.
All these voids is what caused the road to.
Yeah, it is. And those voids are from the old sewer line leaking. It is what it is, but, you know, so we have double challenges of the cost to do it and then what you really run into. It, it's just, you know, we gotta take it as it comes.
Craig, Craig, on the Cotton Street Plant, are we responsible for our percentage of repairs on there? Or, or you do all the repairs and build a parish? I forgot how it works.
Um, we do, we, we do all the repairs, we build a parish for fifty percent.
And then you feel like the plant's, I mean, it's always aging at the time?
This, this budget year, um, just, we had two outfall pumps that, on the, the, um, outfall, uh, station and both pumps went out and they were twenty thousand dollars each to repair, not to buy a new one, just to repair. Um, so we had to rent a bypass pump for a month or two, but that wiped out my whole, uh, equipment repair and maintenance, you know.
Yep.
Just from those two pumps.
And we have a contract that has a percentage basis with the parish that will be renegotiating that contract too. It was supposed to be renegotiated more often than it has and when I discovered that, Craig and I talked about it, so next year when we do the sewer contract with the parish, we'll also be negotiating that contract, because it's past time.
One more question.
Sure.
Craig, what, um, water plant one, what, what, which one, I'm trying to label.
That's the old plant that they converted to, uh, the main station, the one on Admiral Dog.
Okay, and what, what's two? Plant two.
That's plants one and two.
One and two?
They call it that, but plants one and two is that, three is Parker Street, Cotton Street.
Cotton Street.
Four is.
Four is.
The main one?
Yeah.
Sucrose. You might want to label that. I'm only get confused about those, those different.
Yeah. Anybody else? Everybody good? Thank you, Ray.
All right, thank you all.
How about the marshal?
Good evening.
Good evening.
What page?
What is it? At the beginning. Four.
All right, sir, what's changing in your budget?
Not much, um.
That's what I like to hear.
I'm looking at the projection, the twenty-five is a little bit higher than what the actual is. I think it's looking at nine percent higher and the proposed twenty-six budget's, uh, a little bit lower than the twenty-five projection.
Marshall, one question.
Sure.
The people that hand out the subpoenas, you have two?
I have three.
Three? And where does that budget come from?
A part of, um, well, two of them the city pays for, uh, the third one, city pays half of his budget and I pay the other half.
And where does that come from, uh, Freddie? From just?
Oh, the money that we pay?
Yeah.
Comes out of the general fund?
Just the general fund?
Yeah.
We don't have a line item?
It just comes out the general fund.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Marshall.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, Joe, Public Works.
How y'all doing?
How y'all doing? How's it going, Joe?
We're good.
Kind of under the weather, so if I start crying, don't, don't, don't say anything. Forty-nine.
Joe, what's changing in your budget?
Not much.
A little bit of capital outlay.
Yeah. Getting those, uh, trying to get a pickup truck and another vacaw coming too.
Yeah. The vacaw, which has been ordered and that's, that's being, the vacaw's paid out of drainage money, but it goes to Joe's department. Uh, you, you, you went and get some training on how we could clean ditches with the vacaw, you saw that?
Oh, yeah.
That's pretty cool. That's pretty cool. So when the new truck comes in, we got a new trick for it that it can actually clean ditches. So.
You gotta get the attachments.
Yeah, we'll need to get those. I would like to do that. You don't know how expensive those are. Because, you know, with the company coming in and doing more water, uh, hydro blast work, doing more of the cleaning, that should free somebody up with our truck, because I had never seen him clean ditches and it comes out really good. It cuts a new ditch, it hauls the dirt off as it goes, because it sucks it up in the vacaw, so we learned the trick. When you get a chance, we, we don't have it in this budget yet, but I'd like to find out how much those attachments are.
Okay.
Um, you know, and then we're buying a tractor.
A tractor.
Through Joe's budget and then we're getting a, uh, sidewinder and because it's only gonna clean ditches, we're buying that through the drainage.
Drainage, yeah.
But without the tractor, nothing will run the sidewinder, so he gets a new tractor to run the sidewinder.
The sidewinder we got now, the side boom is from two thousand nine.
Dude, that thing breaks so much.
Cost me some money this year. I had to rent a excavator with a side boom from my Berry Run. Cut some of the ditches.
Did you have enough money, because everybody sees it in town, the vacaw this parked at Darby? That we've been waiting on the transfer case.
Supposed to be in this week.
Okay, you have enough money in your budget this year to pay for that?
I don't have enough money this year to pay for it. Just a part alone was thirty-six thousand dollars.
I know, about to ask that. I know.
Just a part alone is thirty-six thousand?
Well, yeah.
Transfer case.
But I didn't want to scrap the, y'all know a new truck, how much a new truck costs, six hundred thousand dollars. We need to fix the old one so that it can be the backup, because, you know, we're gonna need it.
We need it.
And then sewer has one, so this old truck, I'm hoping with the new truck that comes, the one that we repaired will just kind of be the ba, the backup for both departments.
Both departments, yeah, because.
Yeah, fair is fair. We've been using theirs, so.
Been using theirs. We've been, a lot of them.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, on that land improvements, like two hundred fifty-two thousand.
In some sense. It's on page fifty-two.
Actual. My bad, what would you, what is that? I really, I want to make sure.
That was, that was the Center Street sidewalk.
That's the sidewalk, okay.
That's completed already.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's why it's saying zero.
Anybody else?
That was last year, but I was just.
That was last year, yeah. No, and that was one of the biggest sidewalk projects. We had, we used to not do any sidewalks. We did the Dale Street one, we did that one. Um, you know, we have, uh, we're looking for grants to do some more. Um, but we are beginning to, you know, branch out and do more sidewalks. But this year's budget, we're really not strapped. It's, it's a good problem to have, but we have so much road work coming. We are concentrating on that and then the half a million that we got for engineering for roads, as soon as they give me the release of that, will be high. We might even sign the contract now and say contingent upon we get the capital outlay. That's where Bear Out of Habits will, uh, design all the rest of the roads.
So Freddie.
So, anyway.
The streetlights come out the Public Works budget?
Yes, it does.
Yes, they do. Six hundred thousand.
Half a million dollars.
Half a million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Half a million dollars.
And then with the new streetlights, which is, which, it's a caveat, we don't, I don't need it tonight, but everybody's supposed to be putting up, I'm gonna need those lists. Soon as I get the list for the twenty per district, then I can put that together, turn that in. We're gonna ride and look and make sure and then you can bet in Joe's budget will be impacted that we will pay more money in streetlights.
What'd they charge us per light?
You know? I can ask, I can look that up. I, I really need to know that and I've actually talked to Willie about that because I need to know what my, all these new streetlights are gonna add to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Will you increase the budget for the new streetlights?
Not much.
Not much. We, we increased it to six.
Yeah.
Yeah, we increased it a little bit, about seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, because I think it's gonna be about fifty thousand, I'm not positive.
And I want to thank y'all for the help on the grass cutting. Thank y'all for helping with that.
Thank you.
The portal's up. We have one qualified contractor or two?
One, okay.
We got one and a half. We got one qualified contractor and one's working on his insurance. It has not been easy for people to meet those requirements, but we have to have that, as we've talked about. Uh, but we have reached out to quite a few contractors, hoping that some of the ones that, you know, do bid this in other areas that, you know, it's just gonna take a little while to build up a, we'll get it, Joe.
One helper's better than none.
Oh, yeah, well, I didn't want to start with one. He's only bidding against himself, so I thought that I would try to at least have two, you know, a little competition.
So I was trying to keep what to see, I know I just have four grass cutters and I was using my construction, it was as grass cutters to cut the, see the grass and stuff.
You only got four grass cutters?
Yeah, we just hired three more, so we got seven now.
Yeah, but my hope is some of those people end up on the concrete crew. Definitely, definitely.
The money that's gonna be awarded through the portal for contract, is it gonna come out of Joe's budget?
It comes out of inspections.
Inspection, okay. Yeah, we ran it through combines.
Okay, combine, right.
Joe, thanks, man. I appreciate you coming out, man, because you, even though you, you're shorthanded, I appreciate the call, man, and taking care of some stuff from me. Appreciate it.
For everybody. Make sure we didn't figure about Lewis Street. The Lewis Street stuff by the bank?
To the streetlights.
I got a contract looking at that.
I know we're looking at streetlights and everything, but the, uh, tree trimming around the streetlights, is that click or is that partly us to do?
Probably both, to tell you the truth.
Both, it's all, all the things if they got a wire.
Yeah, if there's a wire or something, then clicko has to do it. If there isn't, then we can do it.
We do it, yeah.
Okay, because I see with some of the lights.
And I think when we put new lights up, we got lights that are working, but they're, they're shaded.
Exactly, exactly.
I agree with that.
Just let me know, I'll get them.
Somebody else?
We have an exterminator.
We have an exterminator?
It was something that was just on my nameplate.
Oh, no, we do. They sprayed the building. No, we have one.
I took care of it.
Okay, I was wondering what was going on over there.
Was he falling?
I don't know, man, yeah.
It had wings.
Somebody's happier than I am. Well, thank you, Joe.
All right, thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Give up the good word.
Yep, okay, that was a big one. I need a little one. Uh, the courts. Come on up, Nicole. Not the courts, the city prosecutor. We already did the courts. I always think y'all are together for some reason.
Nope, we're not.
I know. I know.
Six.
What you say what pays them, miss?
Six.
Anything, anything changing in your budget?
Not really. Um, everything's pretty much the same. We did, um, have a decrease that, uh, building improvements came out for our second floor renovations. That's completed, so that's out of the budget for next year, um, which is good. And, um, it looks great down there, so, um, if anybody wants to come down and see, yeah.
Cool, any questions? Everybody good? Thanks, Nicole.
Okay.
That was easy. Okay, now I need a big one. Parks.
Police and fires all of them.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, man. Okay, what's changing in the budget? We got a little capital outlay, not a whole lot, but.
On revenue, we're projecting just a little bit more than last year. Uh, expenses wise, as far as salaries, there's the raises you mentioned earlier. Uh, there's a slight differential. We're not asking for any more, but we will actually end up spending this year because we are adding some personnel on vacant positions that we've been having trouble adding, so we're short one position right now.
But they're already in the budget. It's just you're gonna utilize it.
No changes, no changes. We're actually gonna utilize it.
Yeah.
This year versus previous years.
Okay.
If it stays as it is with personnel.
Understand.
Yes, um, as far as facilities are concerned, the city, the council, the mayor's been very gracious and very active in upgrading our facilities. So we have those large projects that's coming through, truerition. We have some smaller projects that I've been working on this physical year that's coming through truerition. All our capital should be handled, except for the large projects, before the end of the physical year. Uh, we are looking at a couple of used vehicles. I noticed on, uh, this twenty-twenty-six calendar year, we're being granted the opportunity of a new vehicle.
Yeah, one, one new vehicle and then, you still looking for two used ones?
Yes, I have three of them earmarked right now. We gotta go test ride and look at real good to see if they're.
Is that in this year's budget or next year's budget?
That's this year's budget.
That's this year, okay, okay. Cause I almost took one away since I was getting you a new one. No, I'm being serious. I mean, the money's tight. I, I had some other needs and for a little while, I almost called heaven and said, get one used truck and you're getting the one new one next year. I, I figured I could, I could swing for that, but I might steal one from you. But don't give me a lawnmower like the lawnmower you gave me that I got for the PD, because it fell apart and I had to go bring it and spend a whole bunch of money on it. So if you got one truck after you.
But that was a brand new engine.
Uh, yeah, the engine's new, but nothing else was. Uh, when you get your two used trucks and your one new truck, I do need a truck. So if you have one, I know that we're gonna surplus some stuff, but if you got one in your fleet that you can cut out of it that's still decent, I need a truck.
All right.
If you don't, it's okay. I'm gonna go to every department. I actually put a hold on scrapping anything, because everybody had stuff that we were gonna surplus and I'm gonna drive some trucks, because I, there's something I need, so, uh, before we let something go, uh, we have one lemon truck that really was a good truck. I bought it brand new when I got here and they've replaced the transmission. and they've replaced the transmission, they've replaced all kinda stuff, and they're telling me it's shot. I don't quite understand that, and then we got one with a new engine, but everything else is falling apart. Course they're not the same makes, so that I could put them together, uh, because I would've done that already, but anyway.
We have someone surplus now, but three of them are completely, and the other one, when we got it, it was already kinda bad, so.
Yeah, and, and you of all departments do get some hand-me-downs, so I realize that come and look at your yard, I might not find anything. Cool.
You might, we might have parts, if you need parts.
That's it. Now, the, uh, restroom renovations probably have three months left, I guess, two and a half months left, but then they will be.
Including the piping.
Including the pipe.
For City Park.
And Weston.
Both of them, yes.
Glad to hear that, so.
You're working, I mean, it's, it's on.
Should be done by, by before the end of December, incorrect?
Uh, yeah, I'd say January, sometime of January.
January?
Yeah, cuz they gotta line the pipes, but they're coming out really good.
Our ball is December twenty-seventh.
The restaurants will be operational.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're working on the underground lines under the buildings that may.
Yeah, the only thing you might have, and I can't predict when, if they're working on those lines for one pot of bathrooms, those bathrooms are gonna be out of service.
I'm glad to hear, cuz we had a Zoom meeting last night, I was telling them, it's a good possibility those restrooms will be ready for December twenty-seventh for our ball.
It'll be close, but, but it's coming to, it's really coming out good. When you go look at the new bath, the new restrooms, the finishes are really nice, once we get this piping done, we're really gonna have something.
Coating those lines is a real slow process.
Yeah, it takes a while, it takes a while.
The restroom looking real nice.
Yeah, it's gonna be good.
Pictures, yeah, it's real nice.
Any other questions or comments for the parks? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Permit compliance. Or Jane, I could've done Jane.
Good evening, good evening.
Evening, Matt.
Matt.
Yeah, I do.
No.
Okay, so the bit, the major expenses, I, I think, for us is gonna be the portal, which we robbed from.
Page.
Thirty.
Thirty.
You said thirty?
So we took some of Joe's money and got the grass portal going.
What page you said?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Okay.
That's a big ticket item. Also, got a full-time employee.
Yep, yep.
Changing from half, part-time then?
Yeah, Pierre will be full-time, so we, we have a full-time compliance person. Knows everybody in town, he's really been doing well with it.
Yeah.
Uh, so we, Matt and I talked about it, and we offered him a full-time position, it's not like there's a lack of work, he's, he's busy.
There's a lot going on.
And then with the new portal and the grass cutting and, you know, stuff that we're planning, uh, y'all all gonna be busy.
Bring it on.
Good.
That, the, converting the part-time employee to full-time will be a change, you'll see, when you see the final adopted budget.
She'll have to put that in. Any questions or comments?
So you're just gonna amend the budget final adoption?
Yes.
Yeah, when, the one you, that you introduce for adoption next week, we'll have some cha- the change there, and have the corrected figures.
Yes, sir. I knew that was coming.
No, no, me too. I didn't wanna bring it up, but I said, Jesus. You actually will spend some in twenty-five?
Yes, we will. Tom Conway, yes, sir.
Cuz I wanna, uh, thank Matt for all what he does, and even after he goes to tell somebody not good news, they all right with it. I had some people say the guy was very nice.
Yep.
Even though he told me I had to do this. So I appreciate that, cuz it goes a long way.
Yeah, no.
Compared, it just, it comes along, it's much better than going in there with a bad attitude, and, and the law is the law, the ordinance is the ordinance, it's how you present it, and you do a great job, really great.
He can de-escalate.
Yeah.
Any situation. I bring hot heads that are in my office to him all the time, go upstairs and he melts them. Uh, he's got a, he's got a skill set.
Undeniable, Matt, undeniable.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to give him a lot of credit too, cuz he's, Matt has been helping me out a lot in a lot of different situations, and, uh, people have been satisfied, cuz we, we, we took our time, but we always got back to him and made him feel comfortable that it was being taken care of, so he's been doing a great job in that area.
Yeah, and I wanna thank him too, cuz he see me a lot. And, you know, take time with me and be patient, you know, cuz I'm new, so it's good working with you.
All right, anybody got anything else? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Jane?
Thank you, man. Got some budget money?
Yeah, there's nowhere else to go. Hey!
Seventeen.
Good evening.
Hey.
What's new in your budget?
Hi.
Any good money?
So my department budget is pretty much standstill, what fluctuates are the grants. And, um, so we have quite a few, and some are, a couple of them are being carried over from fiscal to fiscal, and then a couple of new state capital outlay grants are coming up this, this year, so, um, it's all good.
Those capital outlay grants, would, you know, we'll be able to use them for, for different things, uh?
I'm sorry?
Any idea what we'll be able to use some of those capital outlay grants for?
Well, we've got, um, we've got streets and drainage, and.
Jane handles all the capital outlays, so the, uh, four million, and these are round figures, the four million in drainage will run through per department. We have, uh, a little bit of cash, but it goes along with drainage, that'll run through our department, and we'll do some engineering. We have a half a million in road cash, then next year we'll be asking for probably five million in roads to go with the engineering that we're doing this year. We have a million for frontage road, it gets stuck in the pot with the other millions of frontage road, and they keep trying to mess that little project around, and Jane and I spend so much time, I mean, every, every year, they, they tried to say it was dormant again this year, it wasn't. Every year, then they, we had a million dollars, then it just went to the, to the bond, uh, commission, so that's good. But for a little while, the person we were dealing with said, no, it's not going through the bond commi-, you know, it's been one thing after another. But the frontage road has been an animal to keep track of, but that's her project. Um, what other capital outlay we have? We, the museum runs through us, there is no match, and it doesn't cost us anything, but the last phase of the musi-, well, we think. The museum keeps getting money, but there's money that's going to the museum that runs through, so that's still paperwork and stuff that Jane has to do.
How about that traffic light thing? Is anything might, might, might be able to come occur in that traffic light we was talking about?
Um, still looking for, yeah. DOTD, we've had a conversation with LTAP, and so they're looking into seeing if we can provide it.
And the pepper plex money runs through her, her budget, so really, all the, all, everything we get from the state.
Yeah, we have Iberia Street overlay, um, pavement preservation, and that, and we're in the design phase right now. Sorry. We're in the design phase right now, and that should take just a couple of more months for design. Um, actually, um, it should be in construction at the early part of twenty-twenty-six, and that project is gonna be pavement preservation, um, of Iberia Street, plus the addition of a bicycle lane from Fulton Street to Almoda, and then we have an LTAP grant, which is all of Dale Street, which is signage, there's no match involved with that project, and that should be underway in just a couple of months. Um, signage and, um, um, traffic light, I think it's a pedestrian crossways. So that's gonna be at no cost to the city, that should be starting pretty soon. And, um, those are two street projects that people, you know, um, are gonna be made.
What about the finalization of the Bank Street?
That's in the road money.
In the road money?
That's in the road money.
Okay, all right, cool.
Darby, wait, I have to say it, Dar- Darby Lane is in the road money, a little bit of Bank Street's in the road money.
Week Street.
Uh, Week Street, and a little bit of the issue I have on Front Street, that's in the, in the road money, so that's all gonna happen, but that's in the road bids.
Mayor, so you're saying Frontage Road is not even close to start?
It makes no sense.
That is crazy.
I'm not being ugly, but, okay, it, for seven, eight years before I got here, I've been here, this'll be my ninth year. It still hasn't been to fruition. We, when I got here, they said it was dormant, and they were canceling the project, so I put up two hundred, you, you were with me here, we were eight hundred in the hole, we went a million in the hole, and put two hundred up and said, now it's not dormant, okay, thinking we were doing some good. Then we, I don't know why, but one year I decided to ask Capital Outlay for money, so they gave us a couple hundred thousand, the next year they gave us a million. Along the way, we got a million and a half out of NPO.
I thought that's why we joined.
Yes, then.
Well, they've been contributing, they're contributing.
They contributed a million and a half, then we just got another million, so we should have enough money to build it.
That's good.
Two years ago, they were supposed to get an engineer, okay, then they redesigned it, then we went to the meetings and okayed where they redesigned it, okay, cuz we wanted to come out in Spanish Town next to the Hampton, we got all that done, so a year ago, we thought it was go- at least maybe two years ago, we thought it was going off a bid. It has been the never-ending project.
Yeah, then we had the railroad crossing.
Yeah, and then we had an issue where there was a railroad.
So what's the holdup now? I mean, the money's there.
Really, there's not.
Really, all the money's there, and they need to get an engineer, they have an engineer now, correct? So, Finstermaker, I think, so Finstermaker's an engineer, we have all the money, I haven't seen any designs yet.
Can't make a call? Not a lot of money tied up in there.
We have a contact with DOTD, and so we're staying in touch now.
We've made many calls.
We'll have to get another contact, well, that is crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been going on for a long time.
And that's holding up a lot of.
Yeah.
Um, future stuff that we can make happen.
Yeah, yeah, because the property that the city owns, there's enough to put two big boxes on that property. If you leased it to a big box, they wouldn't pay any, uh, sales tax, I mean, any property tax, okay? What, what an incentive. If you could lease it to them, then we just have to figure out how cheap could we lease it, cuz you want the jobs and the taxes. What an incentive. If you didn't do that, and you just did a regular pilot, which you could be in control of, cuz you owned a property, you could, uh, freeze the property taxes, you know, for ten years, I mean, we have a bunch of opportunities, we just gotta get the frontage road done.
Well, we need to work on that.
Yeah, well.
That could be our project.
I'll take all the help I can get.
Went to DOTD and.
We've tried a lot of stuff, but hey, I'll take all the help I can get.
Don't, don't we have a new, don't, don't we have recently get a new, uh, didn't we recently get a new DOTD commander?
Yes, huh?
Yes. I'm sure they're not busy, we can maybe call them.
Okay, we can try, sir. Anyway.
I thought it was designed and ready to go, I thought, honestly.
One should be completed twenty-twenty-six, according to the meeting that we went to.
Which means it would bid in twenty-twenty-seven?
And construction twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's what they tell us.
Is a projected time.
That is crazy.
But if you go all the time, they've told us that, you know, we could go back, and it's always a two-year thing, and it's just been kicked and kicked and kicked. And it can't be I forty-nine till you have it, and most other communities are not paying for it, we put money up.
Yeah.
Okay, most communities just say, well, I'm not gonna put anything up, because you have to have it by the time you open I forty-nine, which is the truth, but we did, because we probably the only one who had skin in the game that we owned some property and that we could develop right next to it.
Nine forty-nine.
With all the construction they have in there, that'd be very easy to do, huh?
Yeah, you would, you would, they'd come and do overpasses and everything else, you couldn't throw that into D U.
And I forty-nine was approved, then, then the other guy stepped down, then they had to go back, and they was trying to redo all that stuff again.
Yes, sir. No, it's been a little bit of an adventure. Anyway, we kinda got on a side track.
Good to know, thank you.
Obviously, that's why we needed a new director.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
Ms. Jane, for, uh, I, I see the capital outlays that's here, and I guess there's times through the legislation that they come up with other out, uh, capital outlays throughout the year?
Um, yes, we start working on twenty-six, twenty-seven pretty soon, and so that.
But it's only when sessions end, in other words, capital outlay only happens.
Right.
We, you know.
How many times?
In November, so you, you, you get your ducks in a row, and you start planning, but it's not like I can go back when there's not a session and say, hey, I need some capital outlay, you know, it's, it's, it's gotta wait till the, till the machine's in place.
Yeah.
But it's a process, you, you do, you work on it all year, because it's so much work, you know?
Get it on.
Everybody good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jane.
Thank you.
Now, I could do the admin budget, but you know, I'm gonna call on Richard and do the pepper plex budget. Come on up, Richard.
I think you should listen to the whole budget.
I didn't want him to be last, so we'll save admin for last.
Good evening, everybody.
He's like, he's, he's like he's asleep.
Hope y'all happy as can be.
We are, how are you?
Swell.
What page you on, Richard?
Forty-six. I'm on three.
Yeah, you're on three, that's about right.
All right, what's changing, what's changing in your budget?
Well, not a lot.
No, we got the pepper plex project, and you got a little bit of capital outlay, so.
Yeah. The project should start beginning of the year, hopefully.
Yeah, I think it'll bid out by the end of the year, and then as we've experienced with every project, it takes sixty days for the contractor to get his insurance, get his bond straight, do everything, mobilize, nothing starts fast, so I would say that it probably would start in January. Now, your road is coming sooner. They been staking and doing some things, and I talked to the engineer, and the big box culvert's supposed to be coming in, so, uh, we found the change of order money to put the, the sides on it, we approved that at the last meeting, so I think the road construction is gonna start pretty soon.
So, so the phase that's gonna be bidding or coming up?
Yes.
It's all gonna be one, um, project?
Yeah, one project, one project.
Less the road, less the road.
Less the road that we do now, yeah. But the parking will be part of that?
Yeah, and the next project, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, we got a new office, we have parking, we have another field to turf, we have a little bit of lighting, we have some fencing where the soccer kids can't run out into the new road, we have.
Batting cage.
Batting cage, we have some entrance gates, uh, for the road area. We did have the rails for the bridge, but now the contractor's doing that. We have some shipping containers that we will wrap and make kinda cool, because we need more storage, so we're gonna use some shipping containers. We have a little bit of money for the cross-country, uh, trail that will go around the whole pepper plex that the high schools use, and we hope to do some, we were talking about doing some fun runs and some other things out there once we have it. Uh, what, I forget, Richard?
Lighting, lighting.
The lighting, yeah.
That road that's going, that we talking about now, that's going through to Chili's?
Yes.
That road's gonna be open all the time?
No, sir, it's gonna have gates where we can close it, it's only gonna be open when the pepper plex is open, we can't have people driving into the pepper plex.
That's the plan at the start, unless something changes.
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering, so, um, only time that road will be open is during.
When the pepper plex is open, yes.
Sir, what's the plan for the existing office?
Well, I'm hoping to make that the officials' center.
It needs some work, we, and I don't think we put.
It needed work twenty years ago.
Yes, sir, and we really didn't put money in the project for it, so that's one, we'll have to come back, but there is some termite damage, there's some rod damage, there's, you know.
It, I think it could be salvaged to make it work for the officials, cuz they need a place to get out, away from the public, to change a restroom, which it has, uh, nothing fancy, but.
I didn't wanna, uh, demolish it without getting rid of the parish.
Or, or have something for them somewhere, cuz if, if they don't come, we can't have the tournaments.
It was the tourist commission office at one time.
Yeah, yeah.
So you know, and that was built by Votech, I think.
I think so.
You know how old that thing is?
We have an intergovernmental agreement with the, with the parish for that, to use that building, so before it ever gets demolished or moved, we gotta check with them to stay out of trouble.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we can, we need a structure like that or some sort.
Like everything else.
Let's see, we got a decrease in the maintenance supplies, uh, on page forty-seven.
Page three.
Richard, I see, um, we'll go ahead and finish that question.
Well, yeah, decrease in the maintenance supplies?
Yeah.
It's just to get it more in line with what it's been.
Okay, so he's good in that area where we at right now, as far as? Okay. So he's good in that area where we at right now as far as?
Yeah, we had budgeted more than we spent.
That's what I was asking.
But if you need some more, we'll give it to him. I mean, you know, we got to keep it up, but he had, we had budgeted more than he spent, so we just brought it to what he spent.
What he spent.
Yes, sir.
Richard?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would have anticipated, I'm a little bit disappointed, but I would really have anticipated a little bit more increase in rental fees. You know, we had 89, now we projecting 25. You see any way to leverage that to maybe increase that, that number a little bit more? I know we anticipated to bring more teams in, more activity and more rental. You know, I understand it's not quite open yet, but you see maybe it going up somewhere?
Well, we, we were busy because I think we're the only park that doesn't allow the travel teams. The other parks restrict some of who they rent to. So we actually got a little increase on some of those, those rentals. It's, um, you know, in the offseason now, soccer's going on. We opened up soccer on Saturday. And so it's picking up. I've got a couple of tournaments that people have called, booked in for next year. We got one in October that might happen. But people are just kind of fishing right now, seeing where the tournaments are and stuff. In terms of the rental, um, I think it can go up, but until it does, there's, I mean, we're, we're the cheaper of the other, you know, the closer parks nearby, um, at $30 an hour. So, um, it's reasonable. It's just where the teams, where they're going to practice and play, you know?
I just wanted to...
Some of the teams are mixed, so they, they tend to go a little north of us, I guess. You know, when it's a combined team, the travel teams.
Sure, yeah.
They don't always, even though a couple of the kids, other youth might be on these teams, they, some are traveling. But then we have some regulars. We got regulars that are practicing with us even now.
Seemed like they had a really good time this weekend for soccer when I went by.
They did. Soccer was big.
It, it was huge. I mean, I thought so.
And this Saturday will even be bigger. We have a cross-country, uh, meet at Calico's, but no one, so there'll be 30 or 40 teams on the backside. So it's going to be, as it was last year, interesting weekend, busy. Cross-country goes early and then baseball, uh, soccer starts at nine, but there'll be a little overlap, so it's going to even be busier this weekend. Which is...
Good.
What we all want.
Yeah, definitely. So you see the upside?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
So since construction is going to be going on during baseball season...
We hope.
I mean, that's what it's sounding like.
Yeah.
We're not going to let construction stop, tournaments and Evangeline Little League and all that stuff, right? Like...
Nope.
It's not the plan, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm working with the architect to try to, uh, prioritize what gets done first. Because once we close, once the road closes, that cuts all the parking for soccer, 100-plus cars. So I'm trying to get the, so parking to be one of the first things done.
Okay.
On the, on the new project.
And David's conscious. We, he and I talk, we talk with Richard, but we talk all the time about that. It has to stay. You know, we, we watched Evangeline go up 100 kids. We are in talks trying to make it go up even more. I don't know if that's going to work out. But, yeah, we definitely don't want to slow down the...
Right, yeah.
The resurgence of the play and, and the stuff happening here. So we will work around that.
And we have to turf that third field up front, which wasn't mentioned, but, um...
Yes, I, I did not mention.
But as long as their equipment is out of the way of the public, it should be good.
Impact.
Okay, we need to make sure.
David doesn't think that's going to impact anything.
Yeah, I don't want to tell anyone, no, because we're under construction, uh, because that's, that's a big hit whenever that happens.
It is, it is.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Oh, no, I appreciate that. Anybody else? Everybody good? Thank you, man. You can roll. I appreciate it. Thanks for being patient.
Come out and check it out. Those that haven't been, we'll give you the grant too.
Admin, what page?
Thanks.
All right.
Page seven.
I'll let you know we got practice. We'll practice Thursday.
All right, admin pretty much stayed the same. We didn't make a lot of changes. Added something.
What page?
Seven.
Page seven.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
How many franchise fees do we collect?
Collect on the, um, utilities.
All the utilities.
Yeah.
But I, I see, the only one I see was the electrical franchise fee.
That was for the CLECO money that came in a couple of years ago.
Okay, but...
The other franchise fees are in the finance department.
So all, that's what they have? Okay, so, okay, right.
You see them on page 12.
Question on the...
What's the big increase in clerk of court fees?
The clerk's, he's going up on his fees.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And in admin, you'll see in the next version of the budget, um, we do have an L-GAP grant for 50,000.
Yeah.
So that'll be put in, in administration.
I'm going to replace the cameras here in this building. That's the plan. We have a really old security system. I want to get rid of those cameras that are there. And so we are trying out a new camera system that the PD, uh, let us try out. We got a, a free demo camera just to see when we realize how much better, you know, what we had was junk. So we will be using that money this year to replace the security system. We have people coming and going to court. We have, uh, you know, quite a few people that wander the building, uh, so we really want to do a better system than what we have. We've had a few incidents, you know, along the way.
We're going to look at, uh, later, we're going to look at the dog pound expenses.
Well, that's something that's...
Coming up, should be coming up soon.
Well, our back has been pushed, we in the corner, okay? I'm an old box. I got to punch my way out of the corner. We are, I see some avenues possibly. We are researching the legal end of it to see exactly who is responsible for what, uh, because there's state statutes that we're reviewing. Um, in addition to that, I, I am working on it. I've come up with some designs. I'm coming up with budgets. I have to come up with possible funding sources. I can't come to you with nothing. It's, but our back is against the wall. Do I think that, uh, we're going to, might have to make some changes? And this is not free. Um, we could have to make some cuts to this new budget. But, uh, I don't have a lot of time, but I also don't go off half-cocked. So we are working and looking at our options and looking at it from every angle. So that will be something that I will have to come back. You know, I got the, the quit letter Monday, the, the real letter. So I'll be working on it and at some point, I'm not even sure when, I have to have some solutions before I come. But I realize that we're under the gun because we've been pushed in a corner, so I'll be getting out the corner. Let's just leave it at that.
Think of 2 million, 2 million, what you was talking about?
I'm, I'm not positive. I'm looking at every option.
Because I'm looking at some options.
Well...
Get us some money.
I mean, it's, uh, I have to deal in reality. I have to deal in, I can't go grab at straws. I can't go and say, oh, just write a grant. I mean, you don't have time for all that. So I'm going to look at every option and then I'll be getting back with y'all and, uh, you know. Uh, it's a pickle, but I've been in worse ones, you know? You get out of the corner, you get knocked out, so I'll figure it out.
But if we do do something, it's, it's, it's a little hard right now, but it's still a benefit us in the future. Because our town is growing in a lot of areas, so.
Well, let, let's wait first of all and see who's responsible for what.
Right.
Okay, that's the first thing. State statutes and state laws, state different things. Let's figure out who's supposed to do what first. That's the first step. Then we'll take it from there. And I, but you, you know, you, you're very rightful to bring it up because it will impact our budget.
Yeah.
Uh, but I say we adopt this budget, we get moving, and then we deal with it. If I have to make some changes, I'll come to you with some recommendations and, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out. Can't do it without y'all, so I'll, I'll be back.
And I'm looking at all the, all the new stuff we got going on, 200 houses that we're going to be doing across the bay and all of that. That's people coming in with dogs and everything else.
Couple of years.
You know, so.
At least.
Yeah.
I bet. What's some engineering fees encompass? The 600, well, 616, now it's 536. What does it include?
That's all the frontage road.
That's for the frontage road.
The frontage road, because we even stacked up the engineering money.
Right. We paid, we paid some of that this year. We paid almost 80,000 worth of engineering fees.
I wish we would have paid, I wish we would have paid it all because we'd be closer to going to get the bid.
616,000, the, the engineering fees are paid for the frontage road.
Which we had in the budget since last year.
Right.
We really thought we would have spent that last year.
It's been in the budget since before my time.
Uh-huh, since before you got here. And, and you know, the sad thing is you, they don't realize, it, it, that's just the game we play. But you scrimp to save that money, you're doing away, you're, you're not doing something along the way, thinking that project's coming, and you're squirreling that money away. If you try to move it and use it, then they're going to say, well, you know, you're a dormant project, you can't do it. So it's, it's really sad when an entity holds us up that long because that's money sitting in our budget, that's capital outlay, we could have spent on something else. But I mean, that's the game we live in.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I bet I read somewhere, it seemed like they did a great job collecting a property tax this year, huh?
Yes.
What percentage, I think? It was, I, I read it somewhere.
Almost 98, over 98%.
That's amazing.
Yeah, and occupational licenses, they really caught, we had a gap with that, that a few years it had really slipped that people...
It seemed like it came up.
Were just thinking they could get away with not paying them. They tightened up on that. Yeah, we've had some, some successes.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing.
Anybody else?
Official Journal is going to anticipate it go that much.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Well, basically, the paper is not daily, it's two times a week. And basically, I mean, it's just how it is. We have to have the Daily Iberia's official journal unless there was no newspaper. And really, they're living off of the, the two government entities. I mean, that's more than two, but they're living off the government entities. Because all of us in the parish, that's our, our official record, uh, public record, so you got to use them. One day we'll be able to maybe do it on Facebook, but I'm sure they'll have an opinion about that. So, not anytime soon. Anybody else?
No.
Yeah. Everybody good? All right, well, then we have reviewed the entire budget. Uh, the, the next step is we do a resolution, which brings it to our next meeting. And then, of course, you know, it takes two meetings, so we're introducing the next meeting, passing the following meeting. That puts us right where we need to be because the new budget's November 1. That helps us, you know, get this in a pipeline so that we're not late, we're not, uh, and again, if we have to later, we'll, we'll amend the budget based on, you know, some other certain. We amend the budget all year long, so.
Correct.
Anyway, so if that's all the discussion, we'll move to Madam Clerk, item 3A.
Resolution number 2599, a resolution ordering and calling a public hearing to be held on October 7th, 2025, for public comments for the proposed consolidated budget statement for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Mayor Brotem, Ricky Goslin, and Councilman David Merrill, is there any discussion on this resolution? Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work. Thanks for reviewing it. Thanks for the questions. Uh, you know, we, uh, next step. So I'll move to Councilman's remarks. Councilwoman Bookmarkata, starting yourself.
I was not prepared for a remark, so I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm good to the next meeting.
Okay, good. All right.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good too.
Remarks?
Good.
Good? Okay, I'm good too. All right, so, first time that's ever happened. With that, we shouldn't push our luck. Motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
All right, thank y'all.